Zoning Board of Appeals meeting for Tuesday, October 18th of 2022. As a brief introduction, the Zoning Board of Appeals is a seven-member quasi-judicial body appointed by the Bloomfield Township Board of Trustees per the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act. Matters pending before the Zoning Board of Appeals are decided on a case-by-case basis. Any appeal of a decision made by the Zoning Board of Appeals is subject to Circuit Court review. Each case will be called separately in the order shown on tonight's agenda. There will be an opportunity for public comment at one point during each case. All persons wishing to comment will be asked to provide their name and address at the podium, address your comments to the board, and not the applicant or other members of the public. Given the number of appeals tonight, please make your comments brief and to the point. Comments by the Neighborhood Association will be considered as part of the factual information presented to the board, but the comments are not the determining factor for approval or denial. Please confine comments to the specific request before the board. For a request to be successful, an affirmative vote of at least four members present is required. We hope that this provides a better understanding of what you could expect at tonight's meeting. And I'd like to note that two items have been postponed tonight. So Item 2, which is 1085 Glengarry, has been postponed and will not be heard tonight. And Item 6, which is 1080 North Cranbrook, will not be heard tonight. So I'd like to take attendance.
So noted.
And I'll need a motion to approve the minutes of September 13th, 2022.
So moved?
Support.
So I have a motion and support. All those in favor of the motion to approve the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion passes. So I'd like to call the first item. The applicant appears very eager and ready. So if you could state your name and address and summarize why a variance is needed.
For sure. Jacob Lubig with Ventures Design and Build, 29454 Host Road, Wixon, Michigan. Returning here today, we had the variance meeting last month. We have three different items on the board today. The first one is regards to the pool equipment. It hasn't changed at all since the last meeting. I think there was an error. It was written incorrectly on the last public notice, so it had to get re-notice and re-approved today. So it's still going to be seven feet from the property line. The second item on the list is the fence. The fence hasn't changed since the last time we met. Its primary purpose is to act as a pool barrier. We wanted to extend it to the green portion of the yard so the dog had some more room to run around. When I brought this up at the last meeting, you guys gave it a little bit of a different consideration, but we had to re-notice it as a dog fence for it to be noticed in that consideration. I like to make the point that the perimeter of the entire backyard is well-screened and vegetated with trees, including the secondary front yard where we're proposing the fence. There's actually a 20-foot common space from the northern lot line and old Orchard Drive, so none of that is visible from the adjacent street. And the one thing that we did add is a pergola and bar structure that's going to be in the rear yard. I would argue that there is a practical difficulty because there is only a 25-foot distance between the end of the house and the rear lot line, which leaves very limited space for accessory structures. We'd be willing to add some additional evergreen screening if necessary, but I think that's all I got, so.
So the pergola and the kitchenette encroach 17 feet, seven feet into the 16-yard, 16-foot rear yard.
So it's six and a half feet from the rear property line? I don't know if that was written incorrectly too, because I think the encroachment's supposed to be, wouldn't that be nine feet instead of seven? Maybe it's written backwards, but the way we have it designed right now, it's six and a half feet from the rear lot line.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
Is this a, is this a new house?
No.
What would you consider to be the age of the house?
I'd have to look it up. I'd have to check the BSA online with that, but seems like, I don't, I'm bad at ballparking ages of houses, maybe like the 80s, 90s.
All right. Reason I was asking is it appears to be awfully tight to the lot line.
Yes.
Both the northern and western lot line.
Wasn't situated in the best spot originally.
And when you consider the fact that it's got two front, it's got two front yards, it's just not.
It's a tight envelope. All right. Any other questions? I'll open the public hearing. Does anyone here like to comment on the site? So I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for discussion or a motion.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, let's get the evening started off. With regard to the permission request and the dimensional, request for dimensional variance at 6020 Deramoore, let's deal with the permission request first, and I am going to move that the permission request for the accessory structure be approved as requested based on the information submitted. The information indicates that the applicant has demonstrated compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards. The use of the accessory structure is not going to hinder or discourage the adjacent use of property due to its size or location. With that having been said, and moving to the dimensional variance, in regard to this appeal, I would move that it also be approved as requested based on the information presented the applicant has demonstrated all the standards for practical difficulty. Compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome because we have two front yards and an unusually situated home on the lot, making placement of just about anything requiring an encroachment. There is no injustice to adjoining neighbors. There is screening already present, and the unique circumstances of the property have been demonstrated again by the sight of the home and the dual frontage, neither of which is self-created by the applicant. With that having been said, if this motion is approved, pardon me, next page, application for all necessary permits must be made within one year, and all permits must be obtained prior to construction. And at this point, because of the lot, I'm not, I think some evergreen screening is going to be required on the exterior of the fence so that it is blocked from public view.
Sounds good.
Support.
So I have a motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm opposed. It's just a little too close for me.
Okay. Good.
Do I do roll call?
Let's do roll call.
Okay. So D?
No.
Ford?
Approved.
Keenan Grande?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Gillman?
Yes.
Motion carries five to one.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Your request is granted. So we'll call the next item. Item 1P, as in Paul. So if you could state your name, address, and summarize the need for the variance.
My name is Joe Markson with Blue Line Building Company, 17671 Bailey Road, Brownstown, Michigan. We are proposing to build a covered patio. The patio would have an open wall.
This is for a garage addition.
Oh, are you on number three?
No, we're on one.
One P, as in Paul.
Oh, I'm sorry. My bad.
That's okay.
I thought we started on one and we.
You know, you can jump the line in the supermarket, but not here.
My name is Robert Blakely. The property in question is in the Hickory Heights subdivision.
And your address is?
4465 Park Lane Court.
Okay, great.
And I own this property with my wife. I've lived there for 27 years. Useful background for you folks, this cul-de-sac was the original model homes for this particular subdivision when it began construction. This particular house was the smallest of all the different styles they were offering at that point in time. Original house was about 1,200 square feet in living space plus a 600-square-foot attached garage and no basement, as most of the houses in that early part of the subdivision were. It has had an addition of 300 square feet put in the back many years ago, another one of about 400 square feet on the front to the left that was done by my wife and I about 20 years ago. And the request that we have now is an addition of a garage on the other end of the house, southern direction of the property. The size and shape of that garage was determined with the help of an architect and a builder that I plan to use. And the intent is to be able to finally park cars inside for the first time in two decades and have a little bit of additional storage since the house has no basement. The big challenge we have here is that the lot is basically a triangle. That front boundary, the arc, is only 63 feet. The two long directions or sides of that triangle are over 200 feet each, and it's very difficult to fit something on there that is rectangular without getting close to the lot line. The size we have chosen because we need it to be wide enough for a standard-size two-car garage, front access, and we want the back third or so of that garage to be usable for storage. The existing garage, we intend to turn into living space, reconfigure an existing laundry and lavatory with a new bath, larger laundry, redo a kitchen, pretty much redo the living end of the house remodel as part of this whole project. A lot of, we tend to spend quite a bit of money for a fairly substantial improvement. Think of the other important things to bring to attention.
So I think one of the important things, so go back to the picture, is even though this is a four-foot encroachment, if you look at it, it's just a small triangle.
Yes.
It's just the edge of the garage that is encroaching, so it's really a very small encroachment into the setback.
I certainly agree with you on that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, I was just helping you flesh out the story.
One of the things that I will mention is that the use of that square footage of the property is really going to be the same use. It's currently got cars parked in it every single night. And being able to get most or all of our cars in the garage will basically, I think, give a, you know, a cleaner appearance to the property in exchange for that four feet. I have been in communication with our homeowners association, provided all the information they requested. I received a verbal response. I don't have anything in writing to show you, but I'm sure you're used to dealing with the people in that homeowners association. And basically, all their concerns about the appearance of the addition, whether it fits with the architecture of the house, fits in the neighborhood, there are no concerns whatsoever there. The material finishes, roof lines and all that are considered appropriate. And as far as the encroachment is concerned, the answer I received was, it's an exact quote, but basically, it's their policy to defer to this board on decisions of encroachment. They neither approve or disapprove. Whatever this board decides is the ruling decision. So, oh, and I should mention one other thing. I have spoken to the immediate next-door neighbor. I told her of the plans. I know that she received the official notice that you sent out. She confirmed that to me. She asked me for some more information, and I provided copies of exactly what we're looking at here and what my wife and I are planning to do. She has not chosen, as far as I know, to respond to you with an objection. If she has, I'm not aware of that.
Well, we'll, we'll open the, we'll open the public hearing.
Okay. She did not express anything to me directly that she objects.
Are you referring to this neighbor here? 4485?
Yes, the one that backs, backs up directly to Waddles? Yes, that's the neighbor.
Any questions from the board?
Wait, can you just clarify what your neighbor said? How did you end it with her at 4485?
She, she asked for more information, and I provided that to her, and she said she would look it over.
Gotcha. I will go.
She didn't give me a, she didn't say, "I can't stand this, I won't stand for it." She just asked for more information.
Any other questions for the board? All right, so I'll open the public hearing on this item. Does anyone here like to speak on it? Close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for discussion or a motion.
If you want to make a motion, Chairman.
That would be wonderful.
Okay. In regard to the appeal at 4465 Park Lane Court, requesting a setback variance, I move the variance be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all the standards for practical difficulty because compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome because of the very, very small encroachment presented. There is no adjustment to the adjoining neighbors by reason of the fact, once again, the encroachment is extremely small. Unique circumstances with the property have been demonstrated, given its triangular shape, and this is not self-created due to the fact that this was the layout of the property at the time the home was purchased. If the motion is approved, application for all necessary permits must be made within one year, and all permits must be obtained prior to construction.
Support.
I have motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations. Your request is granted.
Thank you very much, folks. Happy evening.
So calling the next item, number one, 111 North Glengarry. State your name and address.
Good evening. I'm glad you've been here tonight. My name is John DePore, DePore Building, 4076 Maple Road in Bloomfield. I'm here on behalf of the Nobles and their property located at 111 North Glengarry Road. This is what we're finding out more and more is what we call a COVID house, and we mean that this was approved a couple of years ago. Permit was never pulled because of everything. And so we're back in front of you today. Same plan, same request for variance, and if you have any questions on it, great.
Any questions from the board?
I should mention, this is in Bloomfield Village, as you all know, and you can't really do anything outside the back of Bloomfield Village without coming in front of you, because by.
Because you've got approval from the village.
Yep, yeah, approval from the village.
Yep. Sometimes the village doesn't approve everything, just so you know.
And then they come, you still come here?
What's that?
Kathy never told me.
Yeah, sometimes she doesn't approve everything. So I'll open the public hearing. No, you've got it. I'm not saying that you don't, but it's a high standard in the village. So I've opened the public hearing. Anyone like to speak? Close the public hearing, bring it back to the board with the high standard of approval from the village in our packet.
I'll take it. I'd like to make a motion to approve the dimensional variance in regards to the appeal at 111 North Glengarry Road for the proposed addition encroaching into the required front yard setback. I move that the variance be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all standards for practical difficulty because compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome because without the addition, it would prevent reasonable use of the property. There's no injustice to the adjoining neighbors because this is actually already a non-conforming structure, and they're not expanding that. The unique circumstances of the property, again, it's the existing floor plan, and due to that, it is not self-created. If approved, the motion also includes applications for all necessary permits must be made within one year. And I think that's it.
Support.
I have motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations. Your request is granted.
Thank you, Seth.
So Item 2's been postponed, so we'll call Item 3, 800 Covington. So, so you're back. You didn't have to wait long.
Sorry about that.
It's okay. We like enthusiastic presenters.
Just so you know, the village also has no reading tonight, which is why Kathy's not here.
You know, I was, I thought she might have been sick or something, so that's good to, good to know.
All right. Well, again, I'm Joe Markson, Blue Line Building, 17671 Bailey Road, Brownstown. We are proposing to do a covered patio addition to the house at 800 Covington. The structure will also have an exterior fireplace unit. This will be a wood-burning fireplace enclosed in that cultured stone chimney. This is, I've been doing a few of these around the village over the last couple of years, and just kind of another one of the same, covered patios, outdoor entertaining area.
Any questions from the board? So these are just permission requests, because you're.
I believe the permission is for the fireplace because it's detached from the house.
Yep, and the pergola.
Yeah, which they call, I didn't know, pergola, is that the right term for what? Okay. I didn't know because it's covered. To me, pergola means it's got kind of the slats in it, but yes, that's basically what we're asking approval for.
I see, because it's got a covered roof, you're.
Because it's covered, I don't call it a pergola. I guess.
So what would you call it?
I just, a covered patio is what I refer to it. Pergola to me means it's open, but I wasn't sure how you guys phrase that, so.
Okay. Any other questions on the board? Definition of terms? So we'll open the public hearing. Does anyone like to speak on this one? Close the public hearing, bring it back for a motion?
I'll make a motion in regard to the appeal at 800 Covington Road for the accessory structure, the pergola and the fireplace. I move that they be, or that they, excuse me, may be approved as submitted. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards because the location of the accessory structure will not hinder or discourage the adjacent use of property due to the fact that it's within the setbacks and is going to be fully screened 12 months out of the year with evergreens. And the application for all necessary permits should be made within one year and should be obtained prior to construction.
Yes.
Support.
A motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations. Your request is granted.
Thank you.
Calling item number four, 480 North Glengarry.
Glenda Meads with Glenda Meads Architects, 114 South Woodward in Birmingham, Michigan. Mr. and Mrs. Bangler are also here tonight if you have any questions for them. They would like to do renovations to their existing home on this corner lot and in the process of seeking approval from Bloomfield Village. The mudroom addition that you see in the yellow at the top left was preferred by the village to actually align with the garage addition that you see further to the rear. The mudroom addition meets the north side setback, but due to the unique condition of the angled lot line along the north, it means that the garage addition requires the variance that we were requesting. The other variant, and the street is straight there, it's just a unique lot line. The other variance we're requesting is to encroach.
Surveyor was having a bad day.
I don't know. It shows up on all of the plaques and whatnot, but the street is straight, and then that, that property line just dies.
Yeah.
So it makes the garage closer to the lot line, but visually it lines.
You wouldn't let him line a football field. He wouldn't.
I don't know. The other variance we're here for tonight is to do a front-covered porch, to put a roof over the existing open concrete porch. Due to the location of the existing house on the lot, it's already not in compliance with the township front setbacks. They would just like to have a front-covered porch opening. It's not self-created again because the location of the existing house. Thank you.
Any questions from the board? So I'll open this to the public. Any comment from the public? Close the public hearing then for a motion from the board or further discussion. We also have village approval for this request.
Mr. Chairman, with regard to the, excuse me, with the request for dimensional variance at 48, 480 North Glenhurst Drive, I would move that the request be approved as submitted. Based on the information presented, the applicant has demonstrated all of the standards for practical difficulty. Compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome and, in fact, would prohibit the sellers, the owners, from being able to create what I'm going to call common value for today's standards in a home. The unusual lot line, something else must have been considered when this was originally drawn, but certainly does not conform to what we see. So there is no injustice to the adjoining neighbors. The requests are not going to impede anybody's usage because of them. Unique circumstances of the property have been demonstrated by the, again, unique nature of the lot in relationship to the road, and of course, neither of these, none of these were self-created by the current owner. With that having been said, should the motion be approved, application for all permits must be made within one year, and all permits must be obtained prior to construction.
Support.
Motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations. Your request is granted. Calling item five, 1324 Sandringham Way.
I'm just going to stay right here, so again.
How, convenient.
Glenda Meads Architects, 114 South Old Woodward. The proposal you see before us for Mr. and Mrs. Lee, and Mrs. Lee is here to answer any questions, she would tell you, it's a similar hardship. The existing location of the house does not conform with the township front yard setbacks, but is not self-created due to its existing location on the lot. They would like to, to develop a covered front porch. It sits on the existing open front porch framing and will prevent the buildup of ice that they've struggled with for the 25 years they've lived there. And yeah, again, the village has approved the enhancement to the house.
Thanks very much. Any questions from the board? I'll open this for public comment. Does anyone here that'd like to comment on this? I'll then close the public hearing, bring it back to the board for discussion or a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion in regards to the appeal at 1324 Sanderingham. Is that how you say it? Okay.
Sandringham.
For, for a covered porch encroaching into the front yard setback, I move that the variance be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all standards for practical difficulties because compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome because without a covered porch, it would prevent reasonable use and actually prevent a hazard without that, and I have something similar at my home, so I understand that. There's no injustice to the adjoining neighbors because this home is non-conforming, and it also had the support of the association. Unique circumstances of the property, again, the existing floor plan has some limitations as well as the lot, and due to that, it is not self-created. If approved, the motion also includes application for all necessary permits must be made within one year, and all permits must be obtained prior to construction.
Support.
I have a motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations. Your second request is granted.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Item 6 has been postponed, so we'll go to item 7, 3517 Bloomfield Club Drive. State your name and address.
My name is Thomas Morowski, representing Flame Furnace, 1100 East 11 Mile Road. I'm here representing Kirk Gibson at 3517 Bloomfield Club Drive. We're here to seek approval for an existing mechanical generator that was installed due to an internal mistake on our part, but we're here to try and make things right and go through the proper means. And Mr. Gibson's yard, you can see where the current generator is located. There's no hinging, you can't see it from the road or barely from any of the neighbors' yards. His house unfortunately does not. His house unfortunately does not comply, where there was no place to put it in the rear yard, and a side yard installation would have incurred a large cost to him, as well as be very invasive to the home construction. It was also going to be closer to his neighbor to the west, so we had decided on a location in the back right corner of his yard, in order to try and stay away from everybody to keep the noise, as well as visual appeal. With that, we have gotten approval from the HOA, as well as written approval from all the neighbors in there, stating they're okay with the generator location being away from his structure.
So I haven't been to the property, but the view to the rear, so the, what's, can I see the aerial, what's in the rear? Can the...
In the rear is another property, but there is quite a bit of vegetation back there, so they cannot, you cannot see his house. It's 801 or 901 is the view to the rear, so, and then you have 3575. So you cannot see the generator, their house from the generator, and they cannot see the generator from their homes.
That is that, I guess.
Well, the question...
Evergreen, yes. It just seems like it meets...
Evergreen, hiding, hiding the generator is far less my concern. Its proximity to the property line is making me wonder if it's meeting the sound requirements.
We had Tom Benson, the inspector, out there, and he said that everything was okay in terms of the sound, and the neighbors have heard it run, and they've been all okay with it.
Okay. Finding a way to hide it now, yeah, finding a way to hide it now is less of an issue.
It looks so out there in the picture.
Well, it's, but not, but, but it's, it's out there for his house, I'm not sure it's out there for my house.
Well, I can't tell what the view to the rear is. So I think, okay, I'm just making an observation.
Well, the view to the rear, that's me standing along his portrait there, looking towards the generator. Unfortunately, that's difficult to get a proper camera angle from the porch there.
Any other questions? So I'll open this up, public comment, anyone like to speak on this? Close the public comment, bring it back to the board.
The only question I have is whether or not this is the Kirk Gibson that we all know.
It is.
Because, because as a season ticket holder in 1984, I can assure you, I'm very familiar.
So you could hit a home run and make the motion for Mr. Gibson.
Yeah, well, that wasn't my intent, but anyway.
Why don't you do that? Since you're a season ticket holder.
I won't do that.
My son works with Kirk Gibson, he's the producer, that has to actually listen to the direction my son gives him for Tiger Gibbs.
Cool. With having been said, Mr. Chairman, with regard to the dimensional variance at 3517 Bloomfield Club, I would move that the dimensional variance be approved as requested based on the information presented. The applicant did demonstrate all of the standards for practical difficulty. Compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome because of the nature of how the house sits on the property and its proximity. Putting it close to the home would create a variety of issues, making it unusable, excuse me, untenable for the owner, and probably would magnify the sound for the, for the neighbors, as it would bounce off the walls that are there. There is no injustice to the adjoining neighbors, in fact, we have approval from the community. Unique circumstances of the property have been demonstrated based on the information we've discussed already, none of which is self-created. With that having been said, application for all necessary permits must be made within five business days for the existing generator, and I am going to, I'm going to ask that where there might be some openings to public view that evergreen screening be planted.
Motion in support, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted. Calling the next item, item eight, 1571 West Long Lake. State your name and address, and summarize why a variance is needed.
I'm representing my customer right here.
Okay, and your, your address?
My own address?
Sure, give us the address, it's protocol.
My address is out in Brandon.
Okay.
3625 Dartmouth, Brandon Township.
Okay, and what's the reason for the variance?
Reason for the variance is for the installation of a generator system. We propose to put the generator actually in front of the house, directly in front of the garage window. It's a difficult, well, it's hard to find a good place to install on the property because of like heavy slopes going down the western side of the house, and also in the rear. And you've got a lot of windows, doors, driveway, garage doors, air intakes, everything's like interfering with where a generator could go. And we don't want to put it remotely, because you've got neighbors behind you. The neighbor to the west is far off, you can't, wouldn't be able to even see the generator if it was on screen. The neighbor to the east is a new neighbor. The generator, well, the property line to the generator is probably close to 40 feet, I think it's 37 feet, plus their house is over there a ways. As far as from the street, it's over 200 feet to the street, you really can't even see it from the street, and there's new growth coming up with pine trees and stuff you planted to hide it. Plus with this too, it'd be fully screened with evergreens taller than the unit says. Everybody likes to have in the township, and stuff like that, and other places also. Like I said, there's not a really good place to do it. We don't want to put it remotely nowhere because of the neighbors and stuff like that, too. That's about it.
Thanks very much. Any questions from the board? I'll open the public hearing. Anyone here like to comment on this item? Close the public hearing, bring it back to the board.
I'll make a motion in regard to the appeal at 1571 West Long Lake Road for the dimensional variance. I move the variance be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all standards for practical difficulty, because compliance with strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome because of the topography of the home and the, the windows and the placement of the garage. There is no injustice to adjoining neighbors by reason of the fact that it's not visible to them and is quite a distance away as far as the sound is concerned. Unique circumstances with the property have been demonstrated, again, given the topography of the home, and this is not self-created due to the reasons stated above. All necessary permits should be made within one year and should be obtained prior to construction.
Support. Motion in support, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you, appreciate all your help.
So calling next item, item nine, 6204 Darmore. State your name and address of need for the variance.
Hi, I'm Mrs. Carol Abraham. So we just want to put a hot tub. We bought a hot tub, we didn't receive it, and we have on the left side of the, yeah, the left side of the Florida room, so we just want to make a small patio to put the hot tub on, and then make boulders. That's what we have in front of the house, and the left side too, so that's it.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the board? Hot tub in the rear yard. Open the public hearing, anyone like to comment on this item?
Quiet group.
Very quiet group, which is okay. We'll close the public hearing then, bring it back to the board.
Discussion.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion in regards to the appeal at 6204 Darmore Road for the accessory structure of a hot tub. I move that the request be approved as submitted. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards, because the use of accessory structure, as well as the location of the accessory structure is appropriate with the neighborhood, this is a common structure. So if approved, the motion also includes application for all necessary permits must be made within one year, and all permits must be obtained prior to construction.
Support.
I have a motion in support, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you.
Calling item 10, 4209 Clarendon Crest Court.
My name is John Skurnowitz, 5209 Clarendon Crest Court. I've been a resident at that location this week, started my 50th year.
Congratulations.
Wow, that's great.
What I'm looking to do is to replace the fencing in the backyard, which we believe was there when the home was constructed in 1963. The construction was finished in 1963. So that fence was there, we maintained it, and the last couple of years, we've been trying to, trying to get it replaced. The first year was a problem finding somebody to do the job. Now we found somebody to do the job, now we have to get the approvals and get, to get the work finished. So that's our situation. We have a portion of the fence that extends out into the Van Ness secondary yard that we have, our secondary backyard area. And again, since that has been there, I guess my concern is that it should be really grandfathered in. There are difficulties if we don't do that, because our fence and the neighbor's fence butt to each other. So if I have to move mine, I will create a problem for the neighbor, and it'll be an ugly sight. It really would be an ugly sight to have to move my fence. So that's my situation. I ask for the, the approval to replace the fence in place with a new fence, and to get the job done.
Yes, I, I think that that comment was helpful. So what you're saying is the reason, because it is kind of unusual that it, it kind of, rather, an extending flush with the house sort of juts out, and then, then goes over, that, that lines up then with your neighbor's fence, is that right?
That's right. The neighbor's is the exact opposite of what you're looking at on my property. Their gate is where my gate is.
And, and if you didn't do that, then you'd have sort of the, you'd have a fence in the front yard anyway, but it'd be on the property line, so it'd be a little less.
Well, the other, the other observation is that only because it has secondary frontage on Van Ness is this, does this require the variance, because otherwise it would be in the rear yard.
Right.
So it's, it's the unique circumstances of the dirt that, that creates it, and certainly there's no injustice to the neighbors, based on what you've provided.
It's been there for the, so it's been the entire time you've lived there?
Been there the entire time we've lived there, we've maintained it.
That fence could talk.
It's time to be removed.
Okay, so we'll open the public hearing, does anyone like to speak? And so we'll close the public hearing, bring it back for discussion or a motion.
I think I halfway did the motion in my discussion, so I'm going to have to follow through on this, yeah.
Yeah, you're, you're older than the fence, so I think you should make the motion.
By 23 years, I'll have some.
Oh, wow. We'll have to put that in a minute, we'll put that in a minute.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, with regard to the request for dimensional variance at 5209 Clarendon Crest Court, I would move that the request be approved as submitted based on the information request, based on the information presented, the applicant has demonstrated all the standards for practical difficulty. Compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome, because it is only required because of the secondary frontage. There is no injustice to the adjoining neighbors, and in fact would create an injustice if we made him conform. Unique circumstances of the property have been demonstrated, again, because of the dual frontage with Van Ness as a secondary front yard, which certainly was not, not created by the applicant. With that having been said, application for all necessary permits must be made within one year, all permits must be obtained prior to installation. I am not going to request any additional screening, other than to keep what's already there well, well-watered.
Support.
Motion, motion in support for a well-watered motion.
So, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted, and happy anniversary. So we'll call the next item, item 11, 2640 Brady.
Hi, Roberto Carriero, 2640 Brady Drive. I'm here to seek approval for an existing fireplace for an encroachment of what I was assuming was one foot, but the document says otherwise.
Your site language shows 18 feet off the lot line?
So the lot line is the end of it, if that makes sense.
I guess you need to explain the board what the setback is to the property lines?
Yes, so I built it 15 feet from the property line. What you're seeing there with all the triangles are the arborites on the north side, those are the circles with the As, and that's an emulched area, followed by a smaller white marble pebbled place, and then there's a 15 by 12 pea gravel. I don't want to call it a patio, because it's surface level, it's not changing, it's not on a cement base or anything. And then the fireplace is placed in the middle of that, so it is eight feet and five feet from the pea gravel surrounding it, but it is 15 feet from the property line on either side, if that makes sense.
Oh, it's encroaching one foot, is what you're saying?
It's encroaching one foot, yeah, and it's a three by three foot fireplace with an eight inch surround brick, so you could put the foot there. I don't know if you can see it from the pictures. Those are not the pictures I had submitted? Great.
So could we go back to the sort of aerial view with the...
Yes, for sure.
Oh, the, or the, with the, yeah, there we go. So what are those other lines that extend out?
So that's the corner, so that back corner of the house was completely redone and re-landscaped with the intent of putting the wood burning fire pit at a 15-foot distance from the property line, because I was going off of the fire ordinances instead of the accessory structure, because I didn't think it was considered an accessory structure when I Googled bonfire Bloomfield Hills like ordinances.
Okay. And how long has it been there?
A couple of months. I did it in April of this year.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? All right, so we'll open the public hearing, is anyone here like to speak on this?
I'm Alex Gonzalez, I live two houses away from Roberto's house, 2604 Brady Drive. I have full visibility to their backyard, and I have no issues with this fire pit. Thank you.
Thanks very much.
2604 Brady Drive.
Thank you.
Anyone else would like to speak on this item? I'll close the public hearing. I guess you don't really need to respond to that comment, since it's a favorable comment. So any other questions from the board?
So I guess my only concern is, well, first from the picture, so you can see that a couple of the evergreens are dead, and usually when we're going to allow the accessory structure, it has to be fully screened at the time of planting. So like even though those arborites are going to grow and fill in in years...
Right.
Now they're not screening it.
So the unfortunate part is because I had taken other pictures, but there are plants, fragrant plants, lavenders, hummingbird mints, just to kind of offset any smoke if we do it in the, in the day, that those fill in those gaps, but they are, they're dying right now. So by the time I took the pictures, they were no longer in full bloom, and they were dying back because of the cold weather.
Yes.
And I do have plans to replace those two arborites. I was hoping I could nurse them through these last couple of days and like bring them back to life. And one of them is doing okay, but the other one is pretty brown.
I think you're going to need a magic wand to...
So, so, so one of the...
I was a greenhouse manager for three years in college, I feel like I have a good green taste.
One of the, but one of the issues that you run into is that the, the requirement of screening is, is 12 months out of the year, so while you have a variety of, of plants that would fill in in the summer, we're going to lose that screening in the next, next few, next few weeks.
Already lost it.
Even, even some...
We can plant some more as well, I don't mind.
Even some dog, even some boxwood. Mindset.
Yeah, even some boxwood would help screen that.
Because our, our standard is, for accessory structure like that, it has to be screened from public view 12 months out of the year. So if you're good with that.
So I have one from the backside of the fence. It's none of these. I have full intentions of planting a boxwood hedge around it, along with some more hydrangeas and lavenders. This was just all I was able to do at the first, the first time, the first... This was just all I was able to do at the first, the first time, the first go around within a planting season without having to buy them in mid-July and then not have them watered enough where they would die and it would be like a waste of time, resources, and money. But I can, I'm open to putting more plants and that was the full intention.
Great mindset. We appreciate it. So, so are we ready for a motion? Everybody? We?
Of the size of the lot, that's probably the best place to put it. And again, it's not encroaching that far into the setback. There's no injustice to the adjoining neighbor because it will be screened with evergreen plantings. That will be green all 12 months out of the year because he has the skills to do that. Unique circumstances of the property. Again, the existing floor plan, that's probably the best place to put the fire pit. And because of that, it is not self-created. If approved, the motion must include, also includes application for all necessary permits must be made within five business days for the existing fire pit. And I also am adding to my motion to add additional evergreens to screen it from view.
Support.
Motion and support. Any discussion?
I would just note that you, they have to be evergreens and if they're dead, they have to be replaced.
Correct. Got it. All good?
So no, we have to vote. So that was just, so all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations. Your request is granted with the instruction that you've gotta have it screened.
I'll have it screened.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So we're calling the next item, item 12, 6885 Castle Court.
Hello, I'm April Lang from Agwafina Gardens, seeking permission to put up a pergola over an existing patio. The client's fortunate to have a very large backyard, so we're not within any setbacks. The entire backyard is already screened with evergreens and we can just request approval.
Very wonderfully succinct presentation. Any questions? I'll open the hearing to the public. Anyone like to comment on this? Close public hearing. Bring it back for a succinct motion to match the succinct.
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay. Wonderful.
In regard to the appeal at 6885 Castle Court, for the accessory structure, I move the request be approved, the submitted. Based on information presented, the applicant did demonstrate compliance with section 42-7.6 standards because the location of accessory structure will not hinder or discourage the adjacent use of property due to the fact that it meets the setbacks, it's not too high, and it fits in with the harmony of the neighborhood.
Support.
If approved, the motion must include, application for all necessary permits must be made within one year and all permits must be obtained prior to construction.
Support. So I have a motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations. Your request is granted.
See you tomorrow for permits.
Calling item 14, 6454 Lasserode.
13. Oh. You missed one?
Oh, I'm sorry.
13.
13.
Aren't we on 1925 Forest Lane?
I'm sorry. Calling item 13, 1925 Forest Lane. I checked my item too quickly.
I don't see the owner here.
Is?
13 here?
13 here.
Mr. Assad's not in the audience. He's been here before.
So do you want to put this to the end? Do you think we can?
Uh, yeah.
Because this was, we actually have seen this before and this is approval of the four-foot fence that's needed around the pool. So this might be something that Patty could present. I, I think we could, if you guys are willing to take the chance, I think we can do this one.
Doesn't. Well, it's, the pool, the pool's approved and you've got second.
You gotta have a fence around the pool, so.
You've got secondary frontage.
Not a controversial request, I think.
Yeah.
I think it's pretty direct that they're asking for a four-foot aluminum fence located, obviously to contain the pool area, but because it intrudes into their 14-foot, 14-mile road secondary front yard, it necessitates having to seek a variance. But obviously, the setbacks you can identify both from Forest Lane and from Fort Two-Mile Road will exceed any of the potential visibility.
They will. That is the finest presentation we had all evening, Patty. That's just wonderful. So I'll open the public hearing.
From a well-informed presenter.
Yeah, someone that knows what they're doing. Anyone like to comment on this item? Close public hearing then. I think we can vote on this item with a motion.
Okay, I will. I'll go for it.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the dimensional variance in regards to the appeal at 1925 Forest Lane for the fence located in the secondary front yard. I move that the variance be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all standards of practical difficulty because compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome because without a fence with a pool, it would prevent reasonable use of the pool. There's no injustice to the adjoining neighbors because of the orientation of the home on the lot. The unique circumstances of the property have been demonstrated with multiple frontages and because of that, it is not self-created. If approved, the motion also includes all applications for necessary permits must be made within one year and all permits must be obtained prior to installation.
Support.
Motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I can congratulate the applicant, but the request is granted. So now I'll go to item 14, 6454 Lasserode.
Uh, here to, I swear.
Your name and address?
Tom Zager, 6454 Lasserode.
Okay.
Anything I put in the yard will not have a pink tint to it, I promise you that. Here to respectfully request to put a shed in the backyard. As you see, I'm on a double lot. I have a fairly big yard. I'd like to get some stuff out of the garage. The house is 70 years old, so the garage is quite small. And I don't want to keep Tetris-ing everything in my garage all year long, especially with kids and my wife. I don't want her parking outside in the snow anymore. So looking to put a shed in the backyard simply just to remove some of the yard stuff out of the garage like a tractor. So that's, I'll make sure it's, it's all, the arborvities you see in the front are already in there. At the time I put the presentation, I've already planted those in, so those are covered. And I'm not gonna be encroaching on the property line back between me and my neighbor. There's a 10-foot easement. I'm giving myself another foot margin of air, so I should be 27 feet from my side neighbor's yard and 52 feet from the rear neighbor's yard. So well within my, well within my yard.
So with your pointer, could you show us on that aerial where the arborvitie you're going, so we can kind of orient that? Is that the?
Yeah, so.
Okay.
So on the aerial, though?
Yep, right there.
Yeah.
Oops, sorry if you go back.
Go back to, there you go.
All right, these ones I put in right there. They're already in it.
Oh, okay.
I already had those put in. At the time, I didn't do it, but had those put in and then once the shed goes in, we'll probably put more lands, we're gonna put, definitely put more landscaping around it. I just want to get it in there first so I don't have issues with the construction and then with the pad. And once everything goes on, landscaper's coming back to put some more foliage around it just to make it nice around the area.
Okay. Any other questions? I'll open the public hearing for this item. Anyone like to speak? Think we have someone?
I'm Mike Alberts. I live at 6410 Lasser, directly to the south. And Tom has maintained the footprint of the house that's 70 years old, hasn't gone outside of it at all. And we share the vineyard in between the two of us. And so it's kind of rural and there's a lot of stuff to put in the garage. And this is, we've left an open space for our kids and grandkids to run and play baseball and have some room and space. So I'm fully in support of what he's doing.
Thanks very much. It's right by Country Day there.
Except for Country Day is not Country Day anymore.
Anyone else like to speak on this item? So I'll close the public hearing. I don't know that you have to respond to that. Any discussion, motion from the board?
I can make a motion.
Okay.
In regard to the appeal at 6454 Lasserode, for the accessory structure, I move the request be approved and submitted. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate compliance with section 42-7.6 standards. The use of accessory structure is appropriate to the neighborhood as it does meet the setbacks and it is screened from the neighbors. If approved, the motion must include, must include application for all necessary permits must be made within one year and all permits must be obtained prior to installation. And if there are any openings, additional evergreen plantings may be required to screen the shed from public view.
Support.
So I motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations. Your request is granted.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Robyn Gaddra. I'm here with my husband Leo and we just recently purchased 1168 Ashover Drive. We are requesting permission for a shed. It is the only setback requirement that we're asking for that encroaches is on the westerly side and that is eight feet. And the reason for doing that is because if you look at the view of the yard where we propose to put the shed, right there in my beautiful drawing, it's already somewhat screened. We intend to screen with arborvitie all the way around, three-quarters of the yard. If we come out further than that, then it will impede the gate to go in and out of the driveway and to get to the rear yard where it's actually located, so we wouldn't have to move that. And because of where it is situated with our westerly neighbor, it gives it a good screening already right there. So it kind of gets tucked in and makes it less visible from all of the properties. The rest of our yard is hilly. This is the only flat area we have.
And you have the approval of your homeowner association?
Have the approval from the HOA. Yes, sir, it's in the packet.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? I'll open this matter.
She enjoyed doing that far too much.
She did. You, you, you know, talk radio.
I'm standing here.
This is her big chance. Figuring better things. I'll open the public hearing on this item. Anyone like to speak? So I'll close public hearing. Get back to the board. Discussion or motion?
Mr. Chairman, with regard to the permission request and request for dimensional variance at 1168 Ashover, dealing with the permission request first, I am going to move that it be approved as submitted. Based on the information presented, the applicant has demonstrated compliance with section 42-7.6 standards. Location of the accessory structure will not hinder or discourage the adjacent use of property due to its size or location and in fact, will be after screening pretty much invisible. With regard to the dimensional variance, excuse me, with the practical difficulty, I'm gonna move that it also be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all of the standards for practical difficulty. Compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be a duly burdensome because you do require flat property. This also is the best place for screening from the adjoining neighbors. Again, there is no injustice to the adjoining neighbors because this does provide for adequate screening. Unique circumstances of the property are the topography, which has been mentioned, which certainly is not something that would be self-created by the applicant. With that having been said, application for all necessary permits must be made within one year and all permits must be obtained prior to installation. The additional evergreen screening is gonna be required, but I'm going to note that it has already been offered to be, it has already been indicated that it will be installed by the applicant.
Support.
I have a motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations. Your request is granted.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Calling item 16, 1382 Ashover. The applicant here. 1382 Ashover. Appears the applicant isn't here.
Mr. Chairman, I might move to move that we put this.
To the end of the meeting. Motion to postpone to the end.
Support.
And support. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll put item 16 to the end. So calling now item 17, 1390 Kirkway. State your name and address in need for the variance.
Name Nick Levati, representing Nancy Tom at 1390 Kirkway.
So could you summarize the?
Oh, sure. We're seeking the approval of installation of a driveway gate at the front of a property. I guess in, in terms of variance, we're looking for an exception to the accessory structure being close to or within the 16 feet of the side yard of the neighbor.
Front yard.
Oh, in the front yard. The gate is gonna sit approximately 20 feet off of Kirkway Road. Both sides of the gate are heavily covered with trees, evergreens, shrubs. It is, it is covered and it is within, within reason. The proposed gate is, is not going to change the look of the community.
What's the height?
It'll be four feet high.
Four feet high and how wide?
15 feet.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? I'll open this to the public for comment. Any comment? Close the public hearing. So we've got request for gate. So it's located in the front yard. That's the dimensional variance and then the permission request. We have the height, which is, and width.
Mr. Chairman, with regard to the permission request, request for dimensional variance at 1390 Kirkway Road, I'm going to deal with the permission request first, and that is to request that it be approved as submitted. Based on the information presented, the applicant has demonstrated compliance with section 42-7.6. the applicant has demonstrated compliance with section 42-7.6 standards. The location of the accessory structure will not hinder or discourage the adjacent use of property due to, um, its height or location, uh, or the width, um, of it, um, as it extends across the drive. Um, with that having been said, the applicant, the application for the, um, dimensional variance I'm gonna request also be approved. Based on the information presented, the applicant has demonstrated all the standards of practical difficulty. Compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome. The home is well screened from the road and sits back, and this will offer some security and privacy that is necessary in a community of substantial homes where, um, uh, there is little illumination and, um, can prevent people from pulling in there that shouldn't be. Um, there is no injustice to the adjoining neighbors by reason of the, um, request being made. I'm familiar with the community and, uh, would even suggest that it's actually appropriate for the community. Um, the unique circumstances of the property have been mentioned, its location, um, and its, uh, uh, the stature of the community are such that are, are very unique to our community, um, none of which is self-created. And with that having been said, application for all necessary permits must be made within one year. All permits must be obtained prior to construction, and a whole harmless statement must be on file with the township for the gates.
Support.
Motion in support. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations. Your request is granted.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. So calling, uh, item 18, 2406 Heron Wood.
Good evening. Jason Bryan from JCP Design and Build, uh, 801 South Adams Road, Birmingham, representing Mr. and Mrs. Akade. Mrs. Akade is with me, uh, at 2406 here on Heron Wood Drive. We're requesting a, uh, variance to protrude seven feet into the, uh, side yard setback. Um, as you can see by the drawing up there, there's a green belt on, uh, the backside of the house that would be disrupted by putting a pool, uh, directly behind the house. That's at, that's currently shielding an apartment complex, um, uh, from view from not only my homeowners, but the, the neighbors adjoining to it. We're gonna be putting an evergreen screening along the side, um, which will even help deter the, the view of the apartment complex even more. Currently, there's present, uh, drainage conditions between the two properties. The adjoining property, uh, to the left-hand side of this photo is actually draining onto my client's property. So this will let us take some time to address that with the proper drainage necessary to, um, control the drainage and shield the, uh, shield the apartment complex even more. We're also requesting, uh, a raised spa, permission for a raised spa and two pillars on each side of the spa.
Any questions from the board?
Can you describe the nature of the illumination on the pillars? Is it above the, is it on top of the pillars? Is it shining down from the pillars?
It's actually gonna be a spillway coming out of the pillars, just to give an added effect with the spillway from the hot tub itself. And then there's gonna be two spillways coming out of the, uh, pillars facing my client's house, nothing illuminating on either of, any of the other sides.
So it's not gonna be on top of anything? It's not gonna be, okay.
No, sir.
More, more for accent than?
Precisely.
And there's, there's two piers?
There are two, two on each side of the hot tub. This, this hot tub is actually centered on the family room, which in that photo, if you look through the umbrella, is directly there. Um, it's a sliding door wall in the family room, so it'll just be a nice ambiance for them to enjoy.
Any other questions?
I just had one question. So the side that you're encroaching into is the side of the apartment complex?
No, the side we're encroaching to is the neighboring property to the left of this photo. Um, the rear yard is heavily treed.
Oh, I see.
And there's no, no room to put the pool in that location. And if we did put the pool in that location, we'd be removing that green belt, which would open wide up the side of that apartment complex, not only to my client, but to the adjoining neighbors as well.
So just to clarify, excuse me, I'm reen, um, so just to clarify, 2410 would be the property that is going to be adjacent to where that would have the, um, adjacency to that, the pool and the hot tub. So it is on an angle, so they don't have direct view to it. Um, but yeah, that, that would be the location.
Any other questions from the board? I'll open, uh, the public hearing for this matter. If anyone would like to speak on it, come out and state your name and address.
Uh, my name's Joe Walsh. I, I and my wife Diane live in 2410. And, uh, I did apologize to the board. I only guessed there were five members. I distributed five letters, so two of you didn't get the letter. But I'll quickly summarize it. We object to the proposed, uh, the proposal to construct a pool with spa. Um, we've lived in the house 22 years. Uh, and we've both been members of the Heron Wood Homeowners Association. Um, the position of the proposed pool with spa, uh, is going to have, and the related equipment are not behind the house. They move into the set aside, uh, pretty substantially. Um, and we're concerned about the noise that will occur there six months out of the year. It adjo, it adjoins, uh, the pool will join our driveway, which is our main entrance in and out of the house. And we're, I'm out there a lot. We have a good, big yard. We have, um, uh, we have a pool, a pond, the waterfall, and there's a lot of maintenance and enjoyment back there. The other, the other, so there's a, there's a current effect that we're concerned about. Uh, we're also concerned about the effect on our property value. Um, this is going to be very visible to anyone coming into that, uh, house to look at it. We're not planning to leave at this point in time. We've been there 22 years. We like the neighborhood very much. But, um, the visibility of a spa and a pool right next to our driveway is going to be very obvious to any prospective buyer. Um, my other comments are that the board of the Heron Wood Homeowners Association has unanimously, uh, um, decided not to approve this. Uh, the owners presented that to them. Uh, my wife and I owned a pool for 18 years out in Rochester. We're very familiar with noise. We're very familiar with the effect of, on potential buyers of a visible pool. Um, so we're not, we're not hypothesizing here. Um, and finally, um, the neighbor has just completed a, a very large patio directly behind the house, which would be the natural, uh, place for this pool. So there was an option, if a pool was important, to place it there. Um, so those are my comments.
And I'm Diane Walsh, as Joe said, 2410. Um, yes, I am on the board at the moment, and we did have a unanimous decision after looking at the plans and discussing it. But it's our understanding that Bloomfield Township Ordinance says that pools should be directly behind the house. When I called, it was explained to me, if you go a line down the side of the building, straight back, that denotes the backyard. Is, is that correct?
Yes, the reference to accessory structures in the rear yard, correct.
Then we went to our bylaws and we read them, and we felt strongly as a board that this is not something we want to, um, what's the word? Condone, approve, support, encourage? Side lot swimming pools. And the noise, yes, that is, you know, we want neighbors to have fun. We all do, and noise is part of living. But this, we just feel was one step too far, so.
Did, did the board have any suggestion for the homeowners? Uh, you know, you just say, put it in the backyard? Was that the suggestion?
Actually, that was raised as, but there's no room back there now. They filled it in with this patio. Um, I don't even know whether there is space between the back of the patio now and whatever the easement restrictions are, whether the pool could fit at this point, I don't know. Doesn't look that way to me, but.
Okay. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this item? Thank you very much, and I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's the doctor.
Good evening. My name is Tom Patenga. I live at 2384 Heron Wood. I'm also the Vice President of Subdivision. Uh, this concept came to us as members of the board. We looked at the Bloomfield Township Ordinance, which said the pools go in the rear of the home. We looked at our own subdivision covenants, which said the same thing. So all five of us deliberated the issue and came to unanimous decision to deny the application. So we're here now because I think the proposer is asking to put the pool on the side of the home, not the rear of the home, because it's impossible to put it in the rear of the home. But she's already got a development that was added to the home. So she's landlocked in a way. And then we looked at the impact to the neighborhood and the impact to the adjacent neighbor, who just commented on their concern. And then we looked at the precedent setting. If we did approve it, or you approve it, it's a precedent setting for the other 51 homes in the subdivision, since the other five existing pools are all in the rear of the home. So that was our conclusion.
Thank you very much. So anyone else that'd like to speak on this item?
Okay, thank you.
And I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the applicant to respond to the comments.
Uh-oh, we're not gonna have very good luck here. Um, sorry, unfortunately, this came to my attention shortly before the meeting. Um, so I didn't have it printed out. What I have in my hand, which obviously you guys can't see, is a home in the same subdivision that was approved by the board that has the, um, the pool protruding into the side yard. So it's been, it's been approved before. I think we can all come to reason that when your friend is on the board and they're adjacent to the home that wants the pool and you, they don't want the pool.
So, so we're just trying to deal with the facts here, so, so no speculation?
Okay.
So we try to deal with facts. And this board grants exceptions. So we have a, you know, an ordinance, uh, and our, uh, job here is to grant exceptions when we see a practical difficulty. So each case stands on its own.
Yes, sir.
There may be other situations.
Yeah.
So it doesn't create a precedent. We're dealing with the facts of this lot. So if you just combine the comments to the facts, that's what we need.
Yes, sir. Sounds great.
Not, not speculation.
Yes, sir.
Chairman?
Yes.
Could the gentleman use the, the laser pointer to just show us precisely where the pool is gonna be?
Well, that was my question. You stole my question.
All right, pretend that he asked.
Great questions come from great minds, so let's.
You know, senioretty. I demand senioretty.
Right in here. Kind of overlaps the corner of the house and goes right in this location.
Okay.
Um, so my question is, I'm more concerned about the encroachment, uh, versus it being in the, on the side. So is there a way to make it within the 16-foot setback?
There's really not. It would make it extremely close to the back door and just totally create that space unusable. And not only that, but if we did that, we would end up protruding into that green belt along the backside of the property that I had before mentioned, and thus creating a, a worse si, uh, sightline to that apartment complex.
Can, can you do me a favor? I'm gonna use this map here, only because it's the one that's closer to me. Um, thank you. So how recently was that patio constructed that on this appears to be perhaps either under construction or dirt before it was constructed? But when was, when was that patio recently put in? Because it would seem to me that, that if, if one had a master plan of, of how they were conceptualizing the utility of the property, um, the patio and pool could have been taken into consideration because for what it's worth, the patio requires no variance. Um, you could put it right up to the lot line, right next to 2410. And, uh, there'd be nothing that they could do, um, or anybody would need to do relative to your being able to do that. But it got put there, which is where, which is where one might argue is a good location for the pool.
So it was actually put in last summer, and, uh, at the time, the pool was not even in the picture. We had thought that it's not even possible for our lot. And, um, it was actually, it's all the fault of my three kids. And they've, they've been kind of invited to their friend's house, um, pools, and they just, or have been begging for a pool. And in just this crazy world, I just thought it would be a good idea to try and keep them more at home. And really, that's, that's the goal of that. And, um, it really was not in the picture last year at all. So if it was, and I wish it was, I definitely would have done it differently. Cause I, I value my relationship with my neighbors, and I actually did do a walkthrough with them before. And, um, I ensured them that everything would be fully screened, because I definitely do care about their property value and ours as well. Um, and I know they had a good concern about the fence and the noise. Um, and the fence will be properly screened, and I'm hoping that the vegetation will reduce the noise a little bit. Um, and, you know, there have been, I think, six pools that have been permitted in the subdivision this summer. I was told actually by my neighbor who's on the board, um, or have been, I think part of them have been applied. And if noise was a factor, then I don't think any of them should have been permitted. And, um, also I am aware of, um, the, a property 2477, Heron Wood Drive, um, that does have a pergola that was approved by the board, and it's in a very similar location as my pool. Um, so it is visible from the main road. Um, mine would be screened, and I believe that my neighbor is going to be screening hers as well. Um, but that was approved. And then as Jason mentioned, um, there is a pool at 2368 that is also kind of in a similar location as my pool. So this would not be setting a precedent.
So again, we, we don't set precedents. We make exceptions based on, you know, each of the lots that are in front of us. So I, you know, people, you know, bring that up, but I'll just sort of clarify, we set it to stars. It's a, it's a very case-by-case basis. So it's.
And I also do want to mention that I did speak with, um, Chris before I did, you know, kind of present this. And I did understand from him that I was within the rear yard. So I guess I'm, I'm not sure exactly, um, because I, it does line up with my back patio, which is in, you know, right up against the back of my, of the back of my yard. So it does not come past that back line of the house.
Are you saying the, the pool would line up to where the, that side of your house goes all the way to the back, or?
Yeah. So if you go back to the plan, you can kind of see, um, you can see like that, the, you could see like the, it does not go past that corner of my house. So it's still within that back area.
It's, it's, the issue is, isn't that it's not in the backyard. The issue is that it encroaches into the side yard setback. That's the dimensional variance. And of course, the, the, it also requires, um, it, it's kind of like the fencing discussion that we have, that, you know, once you get outside, once you get, once you're no longer behind the house, it, it starts to take into consideration side lot visibility. So it's, it's, it's behind the house, but it's off to the side of the house.
Pools are noisy. I'm not worried about the noise issue. I mean, you know.
Pools, pools are pools.
Yeah, pools are, they are what they are.
Noise isn't the issue. Properly screened, they have no impact on neighborhood values.
And no one has anything to say about it.
Backyards have noise.
Behind your house. They have, no, nothing to say about it.
Volleyball court.
Matter of fact, I always used to tell people, I said, you know, guess what? You don't have to build a pool. They got one. But I do think this is, yeah, I'm not, I'm not real happy with this.
I'm not either. It's just, it's encroaching too close to the side yard. I mean, it's way, way, way beyond the back of the house. It's, it's just a fact. It's not a criticism. It's just a fact.
So you're getting, uh, the feedback that this, uh, might, might be a challenge for us to vote. So you're getting the feedback that this might be a challenge for us to vote to approve. Is there any work that you could do to maybe reconfigure it, or to talk with the association to see if we can get a win-win situation? Or is this your best shot?
I actually had a meeting with them, because I did try to have a discussion with them. And their main concern was that it would be a side yard and not a backyard. And my definite, you know, I guess we were kind of looking to you, and I think that was their comments too, is we were looking to you to give us kind of a ruling on that. And then their other concern was the noise, and then that the pool...
So our feedback is the concern is that you're encroaching into the side yard setback.
Way, way. And nobody...
It's a six-foot...
And there is room in your backyard for a pool, too. You put something else there, you said yourself, hey, you know, if you'd known. So with all of those facts, it would really be difficult for me to vote for this. And I think, kind of at a straw poll here, I'm getting sense from the other Board members that it would be the same thing. So I think it would be in your best interest to see if you can get it out of that side yard setback as much as possible.
So...
Still get the use and your kids, and you want them home. And so I don't know if there's another way to draw it up, I'm not a...
It's currently a six-foot encroachment. Is there any encroachment that would be... I mean, I could make that pool slimmer, you know, and push it, you know? I was just informed by my pool guy that you typically, you know, want to have a certain distance there to make that investment worthwhile. And you don't want to make it too narrow, you know, in terms of like the pool there, but...
Well, you, did you talk to your kids about it? What would they be okay, I mean, I...
Talk to them.
Well, the other thing, the question becomes, do we want to design the solution here, or do we want to just give them the opportunity?
No, but they're asking for feedback, and I'm just saying...
I'm going to move, I'm going to actually move that this be tabled until the next meeting, to see if a more appropriate solution can present itself.
The more you get it out of that setback, the better off you're going to be. That's all I can tell you.
Okay.
So we grant exceptions, not saying we can't grant you an exception, but you've got to give us your absolute best effort to make that pool out of the side yard setback.
I do want to point out, it is out of the sanitary setback. I don't know if that makes a difference, so it is with, you know, outside of that.
You wouldn't want to, you wouldn't want to put it in the sanitary...
No, I wouldn't want it on the sanitary, no.
No, for sure.
But it's like a given almost.
So anyway, I...
So is that helpful feedback, are you kind of getting?
Okay, so, so then...
I'm just going to say, you're a mom who wants a pool for their kids. And I get that. I'm married, I got kids. I have a feeling that if you ask that young man to come up with a concept that was compliant with what we're talking about, he'd figure it out for you. That's my guess.
Maybe you could jazz the pool up with some other feature that they, I don't know.
I'll just say one other thing. You know, the point of our ordinance and these setbacks is because, you know, we kind of have a standard that we've decided as a community that we want to maintain. You know, if you want to be right close to your neighbor, you can go to Birmingham or, you know, other nearby communities. So really, the purpose of what we're trying to do is maintain that feel of the community that we all come to Bloomfield Township for. And part of that is, no, it's 16 feet, you're encroaching six feet. That's almost, you know, half of the whole thing.
Got you.
So just see what you can do and...
So I am going to formally make a motion with regard to the request at 2406 Heron Wood Drive. Would it be postponed until the, would this be tabled or postponed? What would you prefer?
I would suggest you table it to a future meeting date.
I'd table it till a future meeting day.
Because we do have to redenote, and depending on what they decide as far as dimensions, we want to make sure the notice is correct.
Okay.
And we don't have that much time because of our 15-day notice.
Yes.
So why don't you just table it to a future meeting?
Looking forward to the...
I've said that well.
Okay.
I have a motion in support to table to a future meeting date. Any discussion? All who are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So it's tabled. And I hope you've got enough feedback from us to come back to something.
So just to clarify, if I submit it within the next 15 days, it'll be in the next meeting?
It will not be on the November agenda.
Oh, it won't be?
It goes to the paper.
Oh, okay.
You can contact the planning division with any questions at all. Time may be, but we'll be awaiting your revisions or hearing from you.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Calling the next item, item 1993 Long Point.
Good evening, I'm Tim Shoemaker with Michael J. Doolan Associates, Landscape Architects. I'm here representing Mr. Kamen for 1993 Long Point Drive. I have three requests for you tonight. One is a dimensional variance for a generator, dimensional variance for pool equipment, and then a permission request for a spa in the rear yard of the home. So we'll start with the spa, that's the top square in the graphic there provided. It is set a little over 16 feet off the property line, and is strictly a permission request per the ordinance, the way the ordinance is written.
That's good.
Yeah, yeah. And then the three sides, it will be set into the grade a little bit. On the three sides, the left, bottom, right, it will be set in the patio, so it'll only stick up 18 inches. But then on the west side, it will be the full three foot tall with the access panel on that side. And there will be some landscape planting to buffer that from the neighbor views, which the neighbors to the west is West Bloomfield. And there's a community beach over on that side, so it's kind of a public area. Then for the pool equipment, the generator, it's supposed to be located in the rear of the home. But the whole rear of the home is a lot of glass windows and walk outdoors, so it's not ideal location to put it for viewing reasons. And then also setbacks for the exhaust from the equipment, can't be within five feet of an open window or door. So we'd like to locate it on the side of the home, which would encroach about four foot into the side yard setback of the 16-foot requirement. And then that would be supplemented with evergreen screening, eight to 10 feet tall, in addition to the existing arborvitae in the area, which are already 20, 25 feet high. But they're just bare on the bottom, eight feet, as you can see in these images.
Thanks very much. Any questions on the Board? I'll open this matter up for the public to comment. Anyone like to comment on this item? I will close the public hearing, bring it back to the Board for further discussion or a well-crafted motion.
You know, we've had a lot of generators lately. Do you think we have a problem?
Yes, we do.
We have a weather problem.
We do.
No problem with us, or?
No.
The weather.
Mr. Chairman, with regard to the request for dimensional variance and a permission request at 1993 Long Point Drive, again, dealing with the permission request first, I'm going to move that it be approved as submitted, based on the information presented. The applicant has demonstrated compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards. The location of the accessory structure will not hinder or discourage the adjacent use of property because of what it is or where it is. And then with regard to the dimensional variance, I will move that it also be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant has demonstrated all the standards for practical difficulty. Compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome for a variety of reasons. One is the glass across the back of the house. The other is the topography of the property, and the fact that, and I'll leave it at that. Then there is no injustice to adjoining neighbors, and in fact, the adjoining neighbor to the immediate, what is that, west? East, my apologies, is not a residence at all. Unique circumstances of the property have been demonstrated by the site plan that's been provided, which certainly is not something that is self-created. With that having been said, application for unnecessary permits must be made within one year. All permits must be obtained prior to construction. And I'm going to require evergreen screening to screen this from public view, looks like primarily along that east boundary.
Yeah, I'm sorry, it is the, it is the west side for the spa.
Okay.
It is the west side.
All right, you're...
I was thinking the generator, but yeah, the west side is the spa.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
Support.
Motion in support. Any discussion? All who are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Very much.
Calling item 20, 3950 Franklin Road.
I was hoping for an economic report. I was hoping for an economic report.
Well, I can give you one.
From the housing industry.
Still calling, so I'm still here every month.
Okay.
Matt Mosher, representing the homeowners at 3950 Franklin Road. As some of you may know, this is one of the classic estates left in the township. It's the house right off the corner of Franklin and Long Lake with that beautiful arch that you drive through.
Oh, yeah.
This home has recently been purchased by a great community member that many people know, and he is putting a tremendous amount of money into completely rehabbing the home to its original state. One of the things that we're doing is, on the far south side, there's kind of like an accessory driveway that comes into his garages. Right now, that driveway is very close to the corner of both Franklin and Long Lake, about 75 feet off the corner. And it's, at this present point, kind of a dark, almost alleyway type of thing. So the one thing we're looking to do is, we're looking to put a gate in there, as he's already found some people kind of pulling in and turning around and things like that. This gate was designed to match exactly the gate that is on the arch. So it's an exact mimic. The pillars that the gate would attach to are an exact mimic of all the pillars that go along Franklin Road. So everything is true to the original architecture of the house. In that way, there's good, consistent visuals as you kind of pan across. We did set this gate in about 40 feet off the road, so you won't see it at all. And then I think the last thing is the generator. There is a large generator, where we are proposing a new generator. Actually, the new generator will be a little bit smaller, and it will be behind a wall. And as some of you may be able to picture in your head, the whole street along there is a wall along that property. So all of this matches exactly what's going on, and I think, in my opinion, is very tastefully done and thought out, not just by me, by some other people involved in the project, too. And that's kind of a rendering of how it would look, with a lot of that being existing With that being said, happy to answer any questions. So if there are any questions from the Board, I'll open this up to the public. Anyone like to comment? I'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to recuse myself. The applicant is my employer.
I didn't know that.
If you voted for him, you'd probably get a raise.
No, thank you, appreciate that.
I guess that... Well, let's put it this way, somebody could object. If, yeah. The problem you have is that a recusal actually is a no vote, because it now requires five of the six. It now leaves only five of six people to vote, of which you need...
Five.
Five. You need four.
No, four.
You need four to get approval, so...
My intent was to avoid any appearance of impropriety.
No, I understand, I understand. But it's one of the more interesting issues of a recusal, because by removing yourself, the opportunity to approve something...
Gets harder.
It gets harder.
Well, I'm very familiar, as we all are, with property.
Yeah.
And the fact that the applicant is trying to be faithful to restoring it to its glory, I think that's great for our community.
Well, the restoration of property along that entire north side of Long Lake Road to conform with, obviously, the beautiful work that was done on Colonel George's house that was turned into the Kirk is, you know, is certainly an asset for the community.
I'll leave it up to the Board.
Yeah, I think it's going to pass.
So I think, I think you can vote on it, but maybe you don't want to, just because you feel it'd be better if you didn't, you know, because if you...
Maybe based on discussion, we might want to table it, should it become apparent it wouldn't pass.
But I think you can vote. I mean, it's a fairly large company. I don't know if you report directly to...
Well, my association has a business relationship with them as well, but I don't know.
As do a lot of...
Yeah, I don't know that that...
Menders and sponsors.
I don't know that that has anything to do with it.
There's a lot of...
But that's why I was looking for an economic report.
Right.
I don't know what the housing market's going to be.
I was just in discussions with the foundation about how they want to help, you know, housing for...
I think the Chair can maybe gather that there seems to be support generally, and so maybe entertaining emotion might be a good idea.
Did we have public... No, we haven't had public...
Okay.
Because we're trying to decide who's voting on it first.
Any motions?
Well, no, no motions yet. But I'm just saying, is I, if you feel comfortable voting on it, I don't think you have a problem. Does anybody else?
Okay, great. I'm voting my conscience, so...
Yeah, I think it's...
Okay. Because it's not, this isn't a contentious request. So I'll open this to the public. Does anyone here like to comment on this? All right, so I'll close it. Maybe I've done that twice, so. So we want to discuss this? Because it is, this is, I think, very well-known piece of property.
Returning this property to, I mean, this is...
It's a very...
This is wonderful. I have no other way to describe it, because, I mean, you could tear it down and start all over again, but that is against the nature of the community. The community, I mean, we've been talking about, so with that having been said, I'll take a stab. With, Mr. Chairman, with regard to the permission request and request for dimensional variance at 3950 Franklin Road, permission request first, I am going to move that, based, that it be approved as submitted, based on the information presented. The applicant has demonstrated all of the, has demonstrated compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards. Location of the accessory structures that have been proposed will not hinder or discourage the adjacent use of property, and in fact, is going to enhance the nature of the community significantly with the property being restored. With regard to the dimensional variance, I'm going to move that it also be approved as requested, based on the information presented. The applicant has demonstrated all the standards for practical difficulty. Compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be a travesty to the community. I have no other way to describe it. There is no injustice to the adjoining neighbors. In fact, this is a well-secluded property and well-known to the community in addition to that, however. Unique circumstances of the property have been demonstrated. In fact, all you have to do is look at an aerial view of the property to figure that out. None of which, of course, is self-created. With that having been said, application for unnecessary permits must be made within one year. All permits must be obtained prior to construction. Additional evergreen screening is unnecessary, because literally everything is behind a wall that has been in existence for more years than I know, more years than mine. Let's put it that way. And a hold harmless statement must be on file with the Township for the gates.
Support. Motion in support. Any discussion? All who are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, request granted.
Appreciate it.
Long item 21, 4285 Echo Road.
Good evening, Roman Bonislowski, Ronan Roman Architects, representing the owners for 4285 Echo Lane Road, or Echo Road, I'm sorry. Unique, very unique piece of property, historic piece of property. An existing house that's completely within the front setback of the requirement of the property itself. Slightly outdated house, one of three buildings that were on this property. This is the remaining building that's there at this time. There was a carriage home, the main home, and this servants' home originally. We're in front of you here for four items, first of which is a few improvements to the home. I've got flies buzzing around me, I've been in here so long already this evening. Try to keep it short.
Sorry about that, we apologize.
No, it must be me, so that's my problem.
That's good luck, I think, for our presentation.
Yeah, the second is the attempt to put a pool into a project site that is, the topography is quite hilly going back, and beautifully tree, that we didn't want to touch anything. And the last component, it deals with a garage that we're proposing. Currently, there's a little one-car garage that slipped into the property. Currently, the ingress and egress out of the property is very difficult. There's no place for guests to park. I'll first address the... I'll first address the pool. The pool is being proposed with a retaining wall that actually tapers with the grade into the hill. And at its deepest point, at its furthest east point, is actually the wall itself is four feet from the pool deck's surface to the surrounding grade. And because of the configuration of the pool, we were proposing to extend that back portion of retaining wall as an art piece or an art wall at the back of the property, behind which the pool equipment could be hidden. There is no visibility, and we could provide additional evergreen screening. Everything was placed on the site in order not to disturb any of the trees that exist at the back portion of the site. The portion of retaining wall above the highest bit of grade that surrounds the back of the pool is being proposed to be nine feet high. That, we can adjust that. We were planning a rather dramatic art expression at the back of the pool facing the home. The second issue is with the house itself. It's a very dated home. It's a historic home. Not historic on the register, but within the home itself, the circulation is very poor. It's a small home, and we also have owners that wish to be able to provide a small lift between the two floors, because you enter in at the high floor... You enter in at the low floor and go to the higher level above. We were able to squeeze that all in on the northern side of the house without affecting any of the side setbacks. The problem is the replacement of an existing dining room and a foyer with a new dining room and a stairwell, being able to gain back the space inside the house. Since the house is currently 100% within the front setback of the lot, we're restricted with what we could do and have just improved that condition. The last point was with regards to the proposed accessory structure. In speaking with Andrea, we started the process off... This has been months in the making, kind of almost timid and shy with regards to the number of variances that we're facing here because of the inappropriateness of the site, as the current ordinance reads. But as we started the process with the city, we were kind of... I think we had agreed that there was some way of determining that by physically connecting the proposed accessory structure behind the front setback line, we were able to justify that there was a small component of a screen porch that could be attributed to the building footprint, to the principal building footprint, in then determining the amount of garage space that was left over. At that point, we had come up with a number of 44%, but with Andrea's further work and giving us a little slap here and there, it made the determination that our accessory building actually exceeded that 50% mark by a small bit. Very important to note that if, because of this non-compliance of the house and the fact that it's right on the street, it's very difficult for anyone to visit the home. There's no place to park. Part of our entire scheme in this was to be able to provide the equivalence of a small car court in front of the building, so when visitors arrive, you can actually accommodate three or four cars. No place to park on Echo Road at this location. So I'm open to any suggestions or discussion with regards to the height of the back retaining wall. And I did note, originally, when the garage component was being considered potentially as an extension or connected to the principal residence, we didn't heed the 14-foot mark. Our actual hardline dimension was 14.8 to the top of our coping of the garage, and that could be reduced to 14 feet to comply with the accessory structure height.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the board? I'll open the public hearing. Anyone here like to comment on this request? I'll close the public hearing. Bring it back to the board. Motion or motion?
Mr. Chairman, with regard to the request at 4285 Echo Road, both a permission request and a request for dimensional variance, I'm going to move on the permission request, or start with the permission request first, and move that the request be approved as submitted. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards. And despite the unusual nature of the building on the property and the request being made, there is... The location of the accessory structure will in no way, shape, or form hinder or discourage the adjacent use of property, if for no other reason, simply because of the nature and characteristics of the property and neighborhood itself. With that having been said, with regard to the dimensional variance, I'm going to move that it be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all of the standards for practical difficulty. Compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome, and in fact, the ability to retain some of the original housing in this community at its inception is always appreciated, and compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would make that literally impossible. There is no injustice to the adjoining neighbors, again, by nature, by virtue of the community in which the property is located. Unique circumstances of the property have been demonstrated by both topography and location, none of which are... Neither of which are self-created by the property or the person making the request. With that having been said, all applications for... Excuse me. All necessary permits must be made within one year, and all permits must be obtained prior to construction. I am not going to press for additional evergreen screening. My sense is, is that the owner is going to install that more than is... than we would request. We do, however, require a single-family affidavit be on file for the detached garage.
Support.
Motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Congratulations. Request is granted.
I think it's just wonderful seeing some of our original property being reused in its original configuration. Good term. Refreshed.
So item 22, 6345 Westmore. You can state your name and address.
Good evening. I am Linda Griggs, and this is my husband, Tom Burke. And we are... Have owned the property at 6345 Westmore Road for over 31 years. We are here to request an eight-foot natural feature setback variance. We plan to replace the footprint of the current garage at the north end of the house with an acoustically insulated recreational wing, and then add a three-car garage back to the north of that. The entire project footprint easily meets all four property line setbacks. In fact, the northwest corner of the new garage also meets the 25-foot natural feature setback, as you can see in the drawings there. Only the northeast corner of the new garage plan gradually encroaches into the 25-foot naturally... Natural feature setback by about seven and a half to eight feet at the tightest corner, the northeast corners, you can see there, because of the angled property line. Our property is a triangle-shaped, so the existing house is not square with the north property line in the creek, which sharply angle in from the street toward the house, squeezing the available space to build to the north. Our buildable property is limited and restricted for many other reasons, which I can provide if you want, including multiple elevation changes from the front yard to the back. Yet the only feasible area to add on this space for the rec wing and the garage is to the north. The area under discussion is already blacktopped. The new garage footprint does not even extend as far as the blacktop does. The runoff creek is packed dense with trees along the entire length of our driveway, providing natural privacy, and they will not... Trees will not be impacted by this project. Westmore Road is much higher in elevation than the bottom of our driveway. The corner of the garage that needs a variance is 135 feet away and barely visible at all from Westmore Road. We have letters of support from our neighbors directly to the south, directly to the north, across the creek, directly across the street, down the street, and more. We are requesting a small, triangular-shaped, eight-foot maximum variance from the 25-foot natural feature setback at the one corner of our new proposed garage, as shown on this page and page 308 of the PowerPoint. One more. One more. You can see the right hand. Do you see the property line, the angled property line?
Yes.
First edge of the garage meets the natural feature setback. And the other edge of the garage...
Yep.
Encroaches by about seven and a half feet, but we're asking for the eight-foot variance at that corner.
Okay, so it's because of the shape of the lot and the angle, so...
Yeah.
I was intrigued. You said it's an acoustically... What did you say? Sound garage? So do you play an instrument?
Our current house...
What's the reason for the acoustical enhancements?
Because our current house doesn't have... What this renovation will provide, it will provide areas where we can go, where one of us can go and watch TV while the other one has a conversation and not hear each other.
Whoa.
In the same room?
It's very... It's very... Current footprint...
Oh, okay.
Does not have any private spaces. And we're retired, and we're... We have a lot of hobbies and activities that require...
It's good to have some away time. I know what you're saying.
You can be away, but still in the same room. I get it.
Yeah, I thought it was going to be like...
If we could have this...
Electric guitar. I thought you were electric guitar.
Wing. He could play drums while I read a book, and we wouldn't...
Oh, okay, so there is some drumming.
They're friends of Alice Cooper.
Alice Cooper. He was in town over at Comic-Con. All weekend.
I could provide you...
Finding autographs.
With reasons why we're restricted to building to the north.
You know, I think you had a very thorough and thoughtful presentation. I think you've done a phenomenal job.
Thank you.
So let's open it up to public hearing. Anyone like to comment on the...
He's been patiently waiting for the next item, so...
Yeah, he's number... The last guy, he's the caboose. So we'll close the public hearing. I think we can vote on this. This is...
Mr. Chairman, I'm willing to make a motion.
Yeah, I mean, you really did a very fine job.
Yeah, she's amazing.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
We'd like to add you to the staff here. You can do research. Yeah, you can do research. You could also calm down some agitated residents, too. We could use you as a buffer. How does that sound?
Pardon me?
We could use you for agitated residents. You could calm them down. Could you have such a calm demeanor? And then you could go back to your quiet garage and relax.
We're looking for some employment earlier. I don't know that you still are, but...
You know, volunteers, too.
In regard to the appeal at 6345 Westmore Road for the dimensional variance that we're speaking about, I move the variance be approved as requested. Based on the information provided, the applicant did demonstrate all of the standards for practical difficulty, because compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome because of the natures of the property and the building itself. There is no adjustments to... Injustice to the adjoining neighbors by reason of the seclusion of the property therein. Unique circumstances with the property have been demonstrated, given the same, and this is not self-created due to the fact that this is the very property that they bought years ago, and they're just trying to enhance their quality of life. So if this is approved, application for all necessary permits must be made within one year, and all permits must be obtained prior to construction.
Support.
Motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Congratulations. Enjoy the peace and quiet and solitude of your new acoustically enhanced garage.
We insulated. Wait.
Yeah. We've saved a marriage.
I can sleep good tonight.
Yeah. Done something good for the community.
Thank you very much.
All right, so we're calling the... Not second to last item, I guess, because we have postponed it.
I don't know. It says White Lake. White Lake's not in... It's not in Bloomfield Township.
Yeah.
Hi. Good evening, everyone. Not sure how I follow that one, but anyway. My name is Paul Dieters. I'm with Metro Signs and Lighting, 11444 Colts Avenue in Warren. And here before you this evening, as you know, First Merchants Bank has moved into town, taken a number of locations here in the community. They're really excited to be here. We've been working on a number of these locations for them. They've taken over all the Level 1 banks. And what they tried to do, more or less, is replace existing signage like-for-like at all of the communities they've gone into. In this particular case here, there were two Level 1 signs. Each of them was about 46 square feet. What we've proposed are two replacement signs. One of them is 28 square feet, which is a sign that's facing Telegraph, and we've already received approval for that. The sign on the south elevation is a little bit smaller. It's only 20 square feet. So we're proposing one, really just to replace what is there. That south sign is really beneficial for them to have. It's, as you know, it's a little bit of a tricky place to get into that with the four stores there, the gas station, where to enter into that property. People headed northbound on Telegraph. It's a heck of a lot easier to figure out how to get into that place if you see that thing and have time to get in the left lane. Otherwise, you're going a long way past it to turn around. So it's just sort of a safety and convenience factor. And I think it's just in line with what was there. In fact, it's a pretty significant decrease from what they were replacing.
Any questions from the board? So I'll open the public comment. Would you like to comment on the sign? Or you could finish your presentation. You could yield your time for the presentation that you didn't get. So I'll close the public hearing. Let's bring it back. Wrap it up here.
All right, let's bring this home.
Let's bring it home.
Yes.
Yes, okay. All right, I'm going to make a motion to approve the dimensional variance in regards to the appeal at 6450 Telegraph Road for a secondary sign and logo. I move that the variance be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all standards for practical difficulty, because compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome, because without that secondary sign, it would prevent the visibility that is necessary for safety and convenience. There's no injustice to the adjoining neighbors, because this is a replacement sign, and this is a sign that was already there beforehand. Unique circumstances of the property, it would require two signs, because there's two sides of the building that people need to see to be... To identify it. And because of that, it is not self-created. So with that said, if approved, the motion also includes application for all necessary permits must be made within one year, and all permits must be obtained before installation.
Support. I have a motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations. Your request is granted.
There was a parting shot, I'll let you know. I go to a lot of these. I don't see you get through 20-some cases in two hours, so kudos to you. I thought I was going to be here a lot longer.
So I want to...
Well, we have fun while we do.
Yeah. And so I want to add to this. So when Carol came back, she just was amazed at everybody's motion-making ability. So everyone sort of really blossomed in the motion-making ability.
Your leadership.
Look at you, Brian.
I want to make it a friendly environment, so... So, I mean, it is... No, it really is a tribute to all of you.
All right, we got one more.
One more.
We got one more, dude.
We've not pat ourselves on the back yet. We got one more.
I thought I brought it home, but I didn't.
No.
I'm... Yeah, we moved this one to the end of the agenda, and...
This is the pergola, Ashover?
For what it's worth, you open it up for public hearing, but I'll make you a motion.
Do you want to have any short presentation by Patty?
I was just going to identify that, obviously, it's the pergola that's in the complaint with the ordinance. It's a permission request solely, and I think the board has enough information to take action tonight.
All right, so I'll open it up for the public. And then I'll close the public hearing for the prepackaged motion by...
And by Mr. Chairman with regard...
Bob, the dominator of motions.
I don't know about that. I'm just tired and want to go... Just tired and want to go home. Yeah. Mr. Chairman, with regard to the permission request at 1382 Ashover Drive, I would move that the permission request be approved as submitted based on the information presented. The applicant did demonstrate compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards. The applicant did demonstrate compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards. The location of the accessory structure will not hinder or discourage the adjacent use of property due to its location or its height, and in fact, is, for all intents and purposes, about as compliant as you can get, other than the fact that we got to approve, the fact you can have it. With that having been said, application for all necessary permits must be made within one year, and all permits must be obtained prior to construction. And I am not going to move for evergreen construct... Evergreen.
So, we're trying to get support for your motion. You keep...
I know. I'm just trying to add all the stuff that I know that needs to be there.
We have motion and support.
Tired.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. So, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
No. Who wants to say your own aye?
So, move. And a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?